I do this because I also like.
Alright, so there you go. Okay, so I will go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. We'll start off our meeting with a moment of silence. And we will all stand for the President's allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under that indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So you can bring up your take role of course, please. Councilmember Clark here. Reed here. Jackson here. Lawler here. Lanu here. Williamson here. And Mayor Snyder. Here. I make a motion to approve of our agenda with an addition of information that you have before you in the memo in regards to purchasing mowers that needs to be decided on this evening. Do I have motion to approve? For sport. Can you discuss later? So you can bring up. Councilmember Clark. Reed. Jackson. Lawler. Lanu. Williamson. And Mayor Snyder. So we'll start out this evening with presentations and recognitions. We'll start off with information. You have all of our new officers. Oh, okay. So Keith got with us this evening with our new officers so that we can be introduced to them all. And they're not just.
I thought they were following me.
Don't be shy, come on in.
So we've hired quite a few people last year. I'll start kind of backwards. Nate Clark is our new code enforcement officer. Settle so they know who you are. Nate's been with us. I'm not gonna stand. If I stand closer, you might flip on you. But Nate's been with us as a reserve officer since just over a year now. And then he started in May as our new code enforcement officer. He's from Battle Creek originally. And he's attending KCC working on his education. Aaron Reynolds down at the end. Aaron is originally from Angola, Indiana. He attended Northern Michigan University as his bachelor's degree from there. He was an officer in Williamson and also at Capital City Airport where he became a firefighter before he came to work for us back in October of last year. And then Zach Banky. He also started in October last year. He's from Battle Creek. And he also has his bachelor's degree from Alabot College and just graduated from the fire academy recently. Tommy DePonyo. Get him right here. He's originally from Leland, Michigan. He has an associate's degree from Jackson College. He is attending Sienna Heights College right now, working on his bachelor's degree. He's a former EMT with Jackson Community Ambulance and also a firefighter with Summit Township. And he sent a good police academy. He graduated from Washington Community College Police Academy back in December. Scott Austin is a former Calvin County Sheriff's Deputy. He worked for the Sheriff's Department for 20 years. He's originally from Battle Creek. Has an associate's degree from KCC. And he's older than me. He's the oldest guy in the department. So I'm sure everybody knows. Jesse Terrell is from Bellevue. Prior to coming here, she was the village manager in Bellevue. She went to Alabot College and announced her bachelor's degree from Alabot College. And. She's a public safety officer. She was a hard worker in the form. Jesse and Scott also just graduated from the fire academy as well. So they're two new firefighters. And then Yan Tabe Quisbeti. At that ready. JT, as we call him. He has his master's degree from Michigan State University. He was an officer in Coldwater and Long Lake prior to coming to Albean Public Safety. And he just. Or grew up in Slanting. But he also lived in Germany for a while. Scott also lived in Germany for a while. And. Yeah, that's fine. We're still in the process of hiring three more. I had two women, one from that lives here in Albion and one that just graduated from Albion College. They're getting ready to probably attend the Slanting Police Academy starting in August. And we're still in the process of hiring the third person. We can do it now. They're a great bunch of officers, like I told you last week. We've got some experience and some very young officers. But I'm excited to have them all. They enjoyed working here and it's a pleasure to come and work with them every day.
Yes, I appreciate you all being here this evening with us so that we can learn your names a lot and your faces. You know, we see you out and about and then they're like, I have no idea who that is.
I'm just impressed I remember all their names tonight, so.
You have no panic for me.
Right, I was gonna try to do it without them, but I was like, yeah, there's no way.
Awesome. Thank you all. Any comments or from our council for our officers? Yes.
I am excited to see more officers come to Albion. And I hope this is just a great start and a great journey as long as you're here with us. One thing that I always say to the officers when they bring my path in is to make sure that you go home to your families. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So I just say that to say welcome.
Thank you. You know, it's been a struggle to find officers. And it's not just here. Every department is having these issues right now. The job market is very open for law enforcement right now. And I think we've been really lucky to recruit some of the people that we have. As I said, most of these officers all have their bachelor's degree or are working on a bachelor's degree. And that's not something Albion has had in the past because we just didn't have the money to pay people to get to that level of education. It's nice to be able to recruit some of these young men and women who already have degrees prior to coming here.
And then Debbie can see some OC and JC pugs here. Since I used to work at both.
Alright, thank you guys.
Okay, and so do we have Brandon Mauer here? And Brandon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
So the floor is yours, sir.
Alright, thank you so much. I want to just start by thanking everyone for allowing MDOT and us to come and present again. So I think undoubtedly, most everyone knows what we're presenting on. I did send out last week to the city, to Haley Snyder, the presentation that I'll be going over here shortly and several of the plan sheets that kind of depict block per block or, you know, a little bit closer on what some of these pavement markings are options we're looking at. So if you'll bear with me, I'm gonna go ahead and try to share my screen here. It looks like it may have been disabled. Is that something we can?
I just tried to fix it. Brandon, try again.
Okay. Alright, looks like I should be able to do it now, so. Alright. Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so we'll start off here. This probably looks very familiar. This is largely, you know, kind of the same format that was used the last time around. I apologize, I was not able to present that or be a part of that. Wife and I welcomed a new baby girl and I was off for a period of time. So we'll just start out, what we're looking at here is M99 Michigan Avenue between Superior Street and Clark Street is the large part kind of where we're at. Right now, everyone is kind of aware, it just has two yellow stripes right down the center. And it's got a lot of space and it's not really clearly delineated. So that's something that was brought to our attention a fair amount of time ago, probably a year or maybe a little bit more. And we've been kind of working through and collecting feedback all along the way to try to figure out what can we do with this corridor to really maximize the efficiency and safety out there.
And we don't see the illustration.
I'm sorry? Okay, alright, so yep, so that's, and just in light, here's the location again. It took a little bit to switch there. And feel free, if at any point it bogs down or there's any issues, please, please interrupt me, let me know, we'll work through it. Alright, so, and this is really, it's kind of the same. It's a online program we can use to kind of create some visually pleasing and not just a plan sheets with plain black lines drawn on it to showcase really kind of what it operates out there as right now. You've got four lanes, two lanes in each direction, lot of space, but really there's not the traffic volume out there to need that much. So what we've done is we've come up with, after working with the city, listening to some feedback from the residents after the last go around and talking a little bit to the college. We really want to make sure this is an all-inclusive environment where we're trying to listen to everybody. So that's the first go around. We look at it, that is a success because we did get a lot of feedback. We tried to understand what are the bits and pieces that everyone's looking for out here? So by no means are these three, or I guess if you look at it, five options, all-inclusive. There's an infinite number of possibilities, that's for sure. These are just the ones that we kind of looked at and said, alright, based on what we've heard, these are probably gonna be the most likely and available options that we can implement in a short term. So the first one, and in no way, shape, or form are these listed in order of preference. These are just how they kind of felt. The first one is what everyone's already seen. That's the three lanes with bike lanes and no parking. So the second option would be three lanes with parking on one side and buffer on the other. So this would not allow really any room for any bike lanes. So we would end up with a small buffer space and then parking on either the north side, which when you look at it, that would equate to about 54 parking spaces. Or parking on the south side, which would give us about 61. There may be some additional opportunities on the south side if driveway closures can be negotiated. But that's something that we can cross that bridge if we get there. The third option would again be a kind of a part A, part B, depending upon which side parking would be chosen. And we're looking at, this one would include bike lanes with it. So you'd have one lane each direction, bike lanes, and then parking on one side or the other. Talking to some other folks, there's, it has been some interest in looking at, you know, what if we don't have any bike lanes? So another option that we haven't had as much feedback on, but it's something that is definitely out there, is the option, if you looked at parking on both sides and then one lane in each direction. From what we've heard from other stakeholders, there's really kind of been that desire to have either center-left turn lane or the bike lanes. But I just wanted to put that one out there too as an option for consideration. So just to kind of depict this a little bit more in this, I won't go through and describe every little thing, but this is option number one that everyone's already seen. So this is the three lanes with the bike lanes. And they might be a little bit small on the screen, but we're looking at 12-foot lanes everywhere and six-foot bike lanes. Option number two A, so north would be to the left as you're looking at the screen and south to the right. Again, three lanes, you'll have a four-foot buffer space, which is really not wide enough to dictate it as any kind of shared use or bike lane path. So that's where it'll just be marked off with pavement markings as a no-go zone in order to not have a, what would appear to be a 16-foot lane where people may try to do some really interesting, we'll call it maneuvers. So this one would have a parking lane at eight feet wide, three 12-foot drive lanes and a four-foot buffer. Option number two B would be just kind of the mirror image of this. You'd have the parking on the south, everything else would be the same. Again, option number three A, you'd have parking again on the north, but then one lane each direction. And you'd have a bike lane on either side with a buffer, a two-foot buffer to kind of use up the available space between the bike lane on the south and the driving, the motoring public. Option number three B would again be the mirror image of number three A, your parking will just be on the south side this go around. So just as a reminder, I think this was presented last time. You know, there's not a lot of crashes, but there are crashes over a five-year period. There was approximately 33 with several being rear-end, the highest, angle, side sway, pedestrian, and then other crash types. So, you know, there's definitely statistics of something that engineers love to have. And with some of these improvements, we could potentially look at a crash reduction of up to 47%. That's not always a given, you're not always gonna see that, but there are definitely benefits to each of these options. So this is a graph here that kind of illustrates of these three options. And we didn't, we just broke it down into the primary three, what we would be looking at for each one. So as you can see, the first one, one of the drawbacks of it, it doesn't provide parking. So there's no availability for anybody to park along the street there. In other terms, it improved, has the opportunity to improve mobility, reduce speeding by removing one of those lanes, kind of necking it down, increasing safety for motorists and pedestrians, cyclists. And it improves the emergency response, which is something that we've heard from several stakeholders, that there's interest in that. Where having that open, most of the time center-left turn lane allows a really unimpeded opportunity for a lot of these, your emergency responders to get down through there in a pretty quick fashion. The three lanes with parking, again, you know, that we're looking at, you do get parking, but then you lose the cyclist safety. It no longer has those separated bike lanes. Cyclists at that point would then have to either ride with traffic in the lane or if they're allowed to use a sidewalk. The third option is the one where you kind of lose a little bit. You know, going down to one lane each direction, it can be argued, you're not really improving mobility. We have run the models, there is no major concerns. The traffic volumes out here would support a two-lane cross-section with one lane in each direction. And the other option that, once you take it down to one lane each direction, you're really not improving any kind of emergency responsibility. So just wanted to pull that up and kind of give a little bit of how these things compare side by side. There are certainly way more considerations. These are just some of them that as, and what we kind of look at to make sure that it's checking the boxes in the appropriate areas. So what we're kind of really looking for at this point is, we have these five options that we presented. We've given the plan sheets, you have the presentation. So what we're asking is, you know, we don't want to come in and tell you what we're gonna do. We'd like to hear what you want to do. So what we're proposing is that the city and not, we're not asking for it today, but sometime in the future, the council, please meet, work with your constituents, I, you know, however you want to gather feedback. Once you have the appropriate feedback, please let us know which option you'd like to pursue. Now, it could be one of these five ideally. I think we've done a fair amount of work leading up to this point. But if it's not one of these five, let us know. We can certainly try to go back to the drawing board and continue this process. You know, if it's something that we would like to get done sooner rather than later, we have these things. And once we get the assigned resolution in support of one of the options, we can move forward pretty quickly. The only thing I will say is that on our side, once we have a signed resolution, I will then have to attend a meeting with our MDOT upper-level management to present this and let them know what we're doing and what the plan is. The second part of that is, we will also need to have a signed agreement between MDOT and the City of Albion that clearly dictates that the maintenance of the parking lanes, if they are chosen, is a 100% responsibility of the city. So MDOT doesn't paint pavement markings for parking lanes. That would be the responsibility of the City of Albion. Now, when, if we do do, go down that path where we have parking, we needed an agreement, we can also share a little bit more in terms of what the design for pavement markings can look like. We have three different options varying upon what people would like to see out there. It will not change the number of parking spaces. It's just kind of what it looks like. So that's something to consider as well, that there will be a financial piece with any kind of parking that is selected. So that's really kind of what, what we've brought to the table at this point. We're putting it in the council's hands to please work with everyone, everyone that, all your constituents, and then come back to us at a later date, whenever it's deemed necessary, and let us know which option would be the best for your community. Because that's ultimately what everybody wants, is something that works for as many people as possible. Kind of in closing here, I have included my contact information on here. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please do not hesitate to reach out and ask them. I will certainly do my best to answer them and take them into consideration on any, any designs that we have moving forward. So with that, that's what I had at this point. The plan sheets, I will not bore everybody by going through block by block and showing exactly where the pavement markings will align. I would say though, that they are free to share. If anyone wants them, please share either electronically, hard copy, however you would like. They are not a secret and I'd like to have as much feedback as possible on this. So thank you. And I guess at this point, we can open up for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Any council questions? Yes, council member.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So is it possible to do like no parking on the street between like a 6:00 AM and a 5:00 PM? I'm just trying to see if I can visualize some of the conditions for people's families when they come to town. And, and also trying to think about the students that cross the busy street on Michigan Ave. So it's just my thought is, maybe it's a little off, but I was just thinking that maybe we could say something like, no parking between 6:00 AM and 5:00 when the young men and women are crossing, trying to get to the school or wherever it is that they have to go between these hours. So I was, that was one of my thoughts. And another thought was, are we able to just put, I know there's some people on the street that really don't want parking at all in front of their place or on that street, period. But are we able to put like between Marion Street and Oak, Burr Oak? Can you put X's right there so it won't be any parking between there? Are we able to do that?
So that's certainly something. So in terms of the timeframes, that would be dictated by the city. That's, MDOT's not an enforcement agency. We simply just work with the roads and the kind of the structures of them and getting it out there. So when you have parking dedicated, I don't think you'd be able to have it open as a lane for a period of time and then back to parking. That would become really too confusing for motorists and it would be a little bit of a nightmare with pavement markings. So it'd either be always parking marked that way or always a lane. Now, if you do want to put timeframes in there which parking is allowed, that's entirely up to the city and the local law enforcement. If that's something that you're, you'd like to enforce and work on, that is your decision. That kind of comes along with the, the parking itself being the responsibility of the local agency. In terms of parking in front of, in specific blocks or not, that is also something that we can certainly work with. If there's areas that you wish to have no parking, we can certainly accommodate that. Again, that may require additional pavement markings, which would be additional maintenance costs. But the biggest thing that we wanted to try to avoid is having a scenario. So if you look at it right now, how it's designed and how it should be marked, there should be about a two-block area right around Inglewood Street that is four lanes. And then everything else is one lane each direction with parking in different areas on either side, which has really led to a lot of the confusion. And that's what we're trying to get away from more and more. We want a very consistent corridor through there. So there's no, not a lot of opportunities for merging and weaving, which really present a lot of conflict points. But when it comes down to it and how each parking space is utilized, from MDOT's perspective, from my perspective, whatever you guys want to do, we'll support it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, council members.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Thank you, Brandon, I appreciate this. I really appreciate the benefits comparison of the different reconfiguration options. You mentioned that there is an additional option, which I have been asked to speak about, which is one driving lane and parking on both sides. And I was wondering if it's possible for you to do the comparison for that so that when we're evaluating our options, that's one where we could see all of the different improvements that are possible, just from MDOT's expertise. I think that would be really helpful in terms of making those comparisons. What I was told is that the one driving lane and parking on both sides is what the small business in this area wants. And he has 450 signatures. So I think there is a lot of desire to see that. And just to be able to evaluate these consistently, that would really help.
Absolutely, yes, we can certainly produce that and share that with the city at least sometime this week. That shouldn't take too long to present. The, I know I spoke to an individual actually earlier today about that same proposal. And if that's something that would be of interest and the council would like us to really consider, we can try to move forward and develop some plans. That will take a little bit longer, but the comparison is certainly something that can be turned around in a matter of a couple days.
Awesome. Yeah, I know that there, there are, this is a complex issue. So I think that having the time to, to bring people together to address this in the same room will really help. And it just helps to have all the options in front of us. I'm curious when it says improved mobility. I mean, to me, all of these metrics are related to mobility. There's the drivers, there's the pedestrians. So I'm just curious if there's a specific thing when it says improved mobility that you could speak to? Because I see the third option doesn't have that. Where there's two lanes with parking and bike lanes, it says that improved mobility is removed. So I'm just curious to see what that would be.
Yes, absolutely. So when we talk about mobility, certainly there's many different modes of traffic out there. And we still live in a world though where the primary one is the vehicular traffic. So when you're looking at mobility as a whole, you're kind of analyzing the delay that a standard user could experience while traveling from point A to point B on the corridor. So that's when you look at these options, the improved mobility that comes with the three lanes is because of that center-left turn lane, the addition of that. What you're presenting is an opportunity where anybody trying to make a left-hand turn, and this is a unique corridor such that you have a fair number of driveways and other intersections, that there could be a number of trips occurring. So an intersection, it depends on how many people are utilizing that on a daily basis. But each driveway, you can probably say at least two to four trips per day per driveway is something that we would encounter. So that center-left turn lane gets those people out of the through traffic and allows through traffic to continue at a continuous pace. And that's where we see that mobility increase. Whereas with a four-lane section, if you're driving in that center lane or, or the, one of the two center lanes, either eastbound or westbound, and someone is trying to make a left-hand turn in front of you, you're gonna have to stop and make a maneuver, either get around or wait for them to complete their turn. So that's the, the mobility that we've been really looking at. The addition of that, when you do have the bike lanes, that's gonna improve mobility for the bicyclists as well. You know, a lot of times I use the sidewalk, but riding into the, the traffic lane as well is something that a lot of, some people are comfortable with it, others that like myself, I certainly wouldn't jump in with 35 mile an hour traffic and hope for the best. But you know, there are some cyclists that they have, per the law, cyclist has every right to be within the lane, the vehicle does. So when you add those bike lanes, it kind of removes them and they have, they're a little bit more out of harm's way. They're still able to utilize the roadway and it improves mobility for them as well because they're not having to watch motor vehicle traffic quite as much, with the exception of that intersection where they have to obey every law that the vehicles do as well. So the two-lane option is really where you can't say that that's gonna improve mobility now. Will it reduce mobility? Not significantly, because there's simply not the traffic volumes out here to justify that. But the two lanes, at the end of the day, you're taking it from four lanes down to two. So inherently, there will be some reduction in mobility specifically during higher traffic volume times. So your peak times and, you know, with Albion College, you could see some additional backups on move-in or move-out days with your parents bringing in their students.
I'm curious in terms of the data that you have regarding the, the traffic volume, do you have data specifically on bicyclist traffic on this roadway?
I'm sorry, could you? I'm sorry, could, could you repeat the question?
Have data, does MDOT have data regarding the number of bicyclists that use this roadway?
No, we don't. I, I, we don't have any data on that. We would have to complete a separate count for that to see how many bicyclists, bicyclists are actually using it. Um, that's something that's kind of hard to collect too. You know, I, I don't always like the analogy, if you build it, they will come. Uh, that sometimes that's something where you don't necessarily see. The volumes that are predicted, but then it does, when you present some of those new facilities, you may see an increase in the number of cyclists. Uh, but offhand, I, we don't typically collect it just in general traffic counts bicyclist data. If it's something that we, we need to consider and look at the addition of the facilities, we can certainly request that. Of course, our planning folks would have to plan that out. And up until recently, it was a little hard to get out because of, uh, collecting traffic counts over the past year was not necessarily. Accurate data based on how we were, everyone was impacted by the, the pandemic.
Thank you. My last question is just about signage in this, um, same vicinity. Um, there's, it, it seems like there's a need for some basic parking signage, uh, with regard to where the cars. Should go up to the, the end of the roadway. Is that something that MDOT does, um, in terms of no parking or is that the city?
That, yes, that would be MDOT. We would take a look at that. So depending upon which option is selected. We would have to work through revising the TCO, which is a traffic control order that dictates where parking is not allowed. And then we would put up signage accordingly and it would say, and I think there is some out there, but it's, um, you know, with signs and all of our assets. Over time, things happen, they get hit, uh, they fade. So there definitely would, we would be looking at that and that would be something we would do with this. There'd be a coordinated effort between the pavement markings and a TWA, which is a transportation work authorization. Utilizing some additional maintenance funds to get those signs updated per whichever option is selected.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? No. Brandon, this is great information. It's a great starting point in regards to options that we have as a city. I think we need that final, um, kind of, uh, diagram of what it may have looked like, um, from councilwoman LeNeu's standpoint. Um, you know, if we can get that, that we will have every option available to us and then we can proceed as a city. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to present this. And like I said, if any questions arise, please feel free to reach out.
Thanks. All right. So this past Saturday was our designated Juneteenth celebration here in the community. Unfortunately, the rain decided to put the unfortunate alternate, yes, councilwoman. Can I say something when this is finished? Okay. Um, and so we did have a proclamation prepared, um, for any event. And so I'm going to go ahead and celebrate this proclamation. Um, our Juneteenth proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863. Declaring the slaves in Confederate Territory free. Hating away for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African Americans. And it's called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19. And has been celebrated by the African American community for over 150 years. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States. And whereas word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation took some two and a half years. And reaching authorities and African Americans across our country until June 19th, 1865. When Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas. With news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas in 2005, the state of Michigan proclaimed the third Saturday in June. As Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Michigan. Thereby designating Juneteenth as a state holiday. And whereas the annual observance of Juneteenth is critical. To developing a deeper understanding of the significance of the abolition of slavery. And whereas this year, the annual Juneteenth celebration in the city of Alvin. Were to take place on June 19th, 2021. Now therefore, I, Victoria Snyder, mayor of the city of Alvin. Do hereby declare June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth in the city of Alvin, Michigan. And urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of the celebration. And African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. In witness whereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Alvin, Michigan. To be affixed this 19th day of June, 2021. It was also, of course, right before, uh, June 19th. That this also has become a federal holiday. So another great day in American history. So councilwoman.
I, I just wanted people to know why we canceled what you're about to do. We were out there six o'clock in the morning and we had fixed all of the. Uh, Freedom Fighters pictures all the way down the, the walkway where we usually come in and it started raining. And it kept raining and it kept raining and then it broke and it started again. And the people who were handling. The electrical part of, of Juneteenth, uh, where you have the, where we have the music with the walk the beat and the rest of them. Thought that it was better to cancel because they weren't going to hook up the electricity out there. The electricity is not yet put to the pavilion. So it had to been run from the bathrooms over, which were meant hordes coming across the park. In case someone happened to sit on it or something, step, step on it and get electrocuted, that was going to problem. And so we thought better to cancel it until this Saturday. And hopefully, no rain this Saturday. And we're not going to have, uh, we're not going to have a parade. We're just going to start at the park at 12 o'clock. And go through the day and we'll still have the lineup like we got before of, um, music, uh, through the day. The health department will be there doing golden shots and things and, and just like it was set up before, there'll be again for this Saturday. So thank you so much, ladies.
Yes, councilwoman.
Since it was a federal, um, holiday, did you guys recognize it or give technical time off or how was the city recognizing?
We did not. I, with it just being adopted prior, like the day before. Um, we had a discussion and I just assumed that it would follow, go into effect next year because council, you do adopt the days that we do close for holidays and that one. Was not included on the list. So moving forward, we will, uh, Juneteenth as a great holiday.
Right. Right. So our next recognition, um, this past Saturday, I also had the distinct privilege to be a part of. An Eagle Scout ceremony. Uh, it was the first that I've ever attended and it truly was inspirational to hear. What, um, this young man had to go through to become an Eagle Scout. This young man is a citizen of Alvin, um, so I had a great privilege to be there, um, to be a part of this ceremony. So this proclamation is recognizing Eagle Scout Teddy Krasinski. Whereas the vision of the Boy Scouts of America is prepare youth in America to become responsible. Participating citizens and leaders. Who are guided by the Scout oath and law. And whereas Teddy Darrell Krasinski, an honors student at Concord High School. Plans on attending Alvin College in the fall and is a member of the Scouts VSA Troop 158. And has completed the requirements and received the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. On August 25th, 2020, the highest rank in the Scouts VSA. Part of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Teddy started his scouting career on March 3rd, 2014. And turned and earned his Arrow of Light before crossing over from Cub Scouts into Scouts VSA. Where he, where he served in several key scouting leadership roles. Including Assistant Senior Patrol Leader and Senior Patrol Leader. And whereas Teddy earned 27 merit badges. Six more than required to achieve evil, evil ranking. Making him eligible to receive his Bronze Palm Award. And whereas Teddy's Eagle project included assembly and installation of the pavilion. For the Alvin Community Gardens Jefferson Street location. And whereas Teddy is well respected by his teachers, scout leaders and peers. And serves as a reminder that a man's true character is not judged by how much you are liked. But by how much you are respected by others. And whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life. And will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Now therefore, I, Victoria Snyder, mayor of Alvin, do hereby congratulate and recognize. Teddy Darrell Krasinski and his achievement of the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to have him as a member of our community. In witness whereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause to be affect the official seal of Alvin, Michigan. So. Um, next we have, uh, Gerald Heine here, who will be giving us a presentation update from the YMCA.
Just right. Go ahead. All right. Thank you. Thank you for having us. I brought, uh, cherry section with me. Um, so we're about three months into, almost four months into our contract with the city or our service agreement. Um, we started programming in March. We started with fitness classes because obviously. Um, as we all know, it's been a much different world with COVID. So we did what we could start with. And, uh, as of tomorrow, the emergency orders are lifted. So we will be able to start new programming, um, and new sports programming. So we're excited about that. Um, so I'm going to introduce the team to you and they can kind of tell you a little bit about what they do. Uh, like I said, we started with fitness classes. We've had 900 visits. There's some duplication in people, but we've had 900. Uh, visits to fitness classes since they started. We run eight classes a week. Um. We're starting swim lessons later this summer and then, um, what you see behind me is the youth contingent and they are going to be starting new programming with the summer camp at Holland Park. Um, we're partnering with difference makers, uh, at Washington Gardner. And we're also partnering with kids at Hope for some summer programs. And then it's our goal to take it out into the community. Into Mattoosh Park, Victory Park, kind of further out. So, um, we've split the rec coordinator position, um, Zane Newton. Some of you know Zane from running the fitness classes and she's going to do the wellness and the fitness component for us. And then Wanda Camp is going to come in and Wanda, now being native, but is going to do, um, the youth. Portion of the work. And then I'm going to let them all stand up and introduce themselves and, um. Before missing to, I know TR Brown used to work with recreation. Is now you're working Y and there's the other man who's not here.
Shabaki Jazil.
Okay.
And, and Barbora.
Okay. And then do you just want to say your name real quick?
Ataya Argus.
Malia Frost.
Aria Orne.
Zara Akel.
So we're excited to be able to, uh, create jobs for our local youth and they will be supervising open gym, which will start at Washington Gardner. And then they'll be, um, staff in the camps. And then in addition, I think difference makers, we're going to bring them over to the Y in Battle Creek. Um, and then I think Shane passed out the packet of information. We are working to create an LB website that will, um, kind of help us communicate to Alvin residents what's happening with rec. So any questions that you have?
You mentioned camps. Could you speak a little more about what the camp would, would that?
Yeah, the one, um. So we're starting with Holland Park and that, yeah, okay. Um. So we're starting with Holland Park and that will be, uh, middle school and high school kids. And then, uh, this past year, last summer, when we did camp for the younger kids, the COVID restrictions were. Uh, licensing regulations were lifted. They are no longer lifted in Michigan. So it's a little more stringent about what sites we can use for younger kids. Um, it's our intention to have camp either at the Methodist Church or at Kroll School. Um, it'll depend on what, where we get licensing for, great start ready and program.
So it's more straightforward summer?
It is. Yes. Yeah. They waived pretty much all of the, um, licensing requirements. Last year, but those have been reinstated for 2021.
So you said Methodist Church or where?
Kroll, Kroll.
What age, what, what age groups?
This, uh, Holland Park will be split into two groups and there'll be a middle school group and a high school group. Uh, for either Kroll or the Methodist Church. It will be, uh, five to 10 years old. So it'll be a younger age group. And we'll split that again into two classrooms. Excuse me. So there'll be a younger classroom and an older classroom.
Does it have hours and things not here?
It will. We're going to, uh, send that information out. So if you want.
Um, thank you. So will there be any T-ball, basketball, baseball?
We are, yeah, well, well, right now Playwright is running T-ball. We are working to do some of that reprogramming and once the team gets together.
Yeah, I can't, I'm going to speak on that. Um, because the one thing that I'm excited about.
You want to, you want to kick off your mental that everybody else that is listening is doing.
Probably work because no voice doesn't carry to them anymore. So, um, the one goal that we have is if there's already a particular sport here, we don't want to be creating the same sports. So that we're competing for you. We want to be able to provide, pretty much like what Brandon said. We want to be able to create new things and something for everyone. So where it's what the youth want to see. So this is new, they're creating it. So it's not, we want you to join this. We want you to join this. This is what you want to see. So, and that's what I'm excited about is brand new canvas. They get to build this. Tell us what it is that you want because they're going to be more active. What is something they're going to do? They want to do is that you said, we want you to sign up and join us. So our goal was to find out the programs the youth want and we want to get back to them.
So right now we just have T-ball, like Jeff said, through Playwright. So what other sports are you kind of envisioning?
Um, we have discussed pickleball as one.
Um, for the locals or?
Both, both. So we talked about basketball, volleyball, pickleball, tennis. I think would be the sports that we're targeting to start.
So what are we, so how are we ensuring like quality of programming? I just might, because some of this can almost look a little bit like. It's just a place to go for two hours and there's some fun activities, but you know, when it comes to recreation, there's sports and there's learning and. How to be a good team member and that development of how to play a sport and participate. If you remember, you know, we had some pretty robust programs a long time ago around that in Alvin. So we're going to try to have that happen again. Um, through what you guys are doing, like, you know, when you're saying basketball and swim lessons.
Right.
All of those things. I'm just kind of wondering that we don't turn it to, one of my criticisms of recreation in the past has been sometimes it feels like a babysitting.
Right.
You know, you go to open gym, you play with your friends and that's fun and that has a place in a recreation program. But, um, as a parent, as team members, you know, what are we going to do for those parents and families seeking that team experience, that, that traditional rec? Kind of learning experience and then, you know, even games and things like that.
Right. Well, I think it's two goals. So number one, I think Y's nationally have a character development. They have a youth, youth development, healthy living platform. So we run that programming in Battle Creek. Um, so that is the character development piece that you're talking about. In addition to. Fitness, sports, fun, right? So those two things are knitted together in these programs. Uh, number two, I think, um, that's personal, I brought it up, there, there will be rec leagues. Uh, and they just have to get built and because of COVID and testing for kid sports. Uh, we're now just starting that process. And what we want to do before we build those is to take feedback from. Parents and kids about what they want to see. So there will be not just open gym, but sports leagues. Camps, clinics, specific development activities.
Hi, councilwoman.
Seven-year-old granddaughter that's wanting to be with me for four weeks.
Okay.
Who loves to get into things and rip and run and play. And so that's why I was wondering, you know, what was going to be done so I could get her signed. And so that's why I was wondering, you know, what was going to be done so I could get her signed up?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a camp at one of those two sites for a seven-year-old. And then it's, it's also our intention to do some fun one-off activities. We want to keep the traditions, like the daddy-daughter dance. We were going to do that in either April, was it April or what was June? We moved it to September because of capacity limits. We did the Easter egg hunt in March or April. So again, we want to build in some family focus activities as well.
And just to add to that, we have had rec here, and there are some things that worked, and worked well. So we can still do those things, we will, but there were a lot of things that didn't. So we want to add new to some of that what was traditional, because it didn't work then, so you can't keep doing the same thing, except you better expect the results. So kind of like interchanging some of what we had with something new as well.
So the, and the information that you passed out to us, the, for the team funds, that's every, well, the Fridays that are listed, correct?
There is a Friday fund, and then there will be a camp that isn't rolling that starts on the 6th of July, and that will be Monday through Thursday.
And that's for the five to 10-year-olds?
That's for the, the middle school and high school kids.
And rolling up to July?
It'll be rolling, I mean, it'll, yes, the camp will start that week, July 6th, but you can continue to come regardless.
And then, I'm sorry, because it was the other sheet, what, Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday, from 1 to 3. And then on Fridays, there'll be the activity day.
Can I see somebody else who's scared enough?
I was just wondering, I know the city voted on when Mayor Edgerson was here about including Victory Park and the baseball fields and things like that, as well as the tennis courts, so where are we with that?
We're waiting to receive an updated quote from the contractor, because they quote that during receiving process have obviously increased that, and we're expecting to receive that back from, from them to toward updating those improvement stuff.
So, we're bringing the contractor in just to dig up the field for the baseball pools?
No, this is for the basketball and tennis courts.
Okay, so what are we going to do with those?
The basketball and tennis courts?
No, the, the baseball pools.
Right now, we, there has not been any plan to do anything with those. I know we have put a lot of work into catch-up field to get that updated for Playwright's T-ball, but the two Victory Park fields, we haven't discussed anything with that. Right now, we're, the Parks and Recreation Survey is live, so we are asking for feedback on all of those spaces. And then we will evaluate the data from that and settle the plan for our master plan.
Yeah, since T-ball is the only organized sport that we have right now, they have done a lot of work on catch-ups, so that's ready to use for the T-ball teams. Yes, Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you. Is T-ball, was it Tuesday through Thursday, starting at 6 o'clock? Is that the time of this?
I don't remember.
It was two nights a week. Tuesday, I believe it was Tuesday, I think it's 6 o'clock. I don't know how long that runs.
I believe it's through the month of June.
Oh, God.
Well, he, well, the last time I talked to Mr. Barnes, I think they were going to go to T-ball again, with kind of like competitions between like our team and then the local teams that they have for T-ball. So I think he would have said that.
And then just to confirm the dates for these camps. So we have something from five to 10-year-olds, Monday through Thursday, 1 to 3, is that they consistently?
The five to 10 will be a longer day. I just have to figure out what site I'm going to use, and then there'll be the availability.
Okay, okay, so then we have ages 12 to 17.
Yes, and that'll be 1 to 3.
And that's going down.
Correct.
Starting July 6 through?
Usually, last year, we ran it through mid-August. I don't know when school starts again, but we would try to coincide with that.
And that's at Allen Park?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the rate site will be Washington Gardner.
Okay, thank you.
And then Meetup and Eatup is going to be in Allen Park like last summer, and they're also going to be at Washington Gardner, so they'll have two sites.
That starts July 1st? Then Meetup, Eatup starts in July 1st at Washington Gardner. I don't know the date that they set at Allen Park yet.
I don't know that date.
So we need to get those days. And then also, we need to make the city aware of how they are prepared food this year, because due to COVID, in some areas, they are only giving them frozen food. So we need to, we'll have to get that to Jeremy. So frozen food is given to them, and they have to take it and heat it up, so.
But we're currently discussing with them the options to provide not, to provide hot meals to other students, so. Is this the Marshall Public Schools? It's Marshall Public Schools.
Yeah, a few more information, because we need to make sure everyone knows what they're looking at when we can do that.
We also have to say that the chief kept has got ping pong tables, and I've got the paddles, and they have given to you.
Okay.
And the kids can learn how to ping pong.
That'd be awesome. Does Difference Makers could use those as well? Yes, they can use that.
All right, any other questions or comments for Ms. Heim? Awesome.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you all for coming in. Glad to be here, glad to be our guys taking the reins for our community.
All right, Jesse, do we have anybody on for a comment? Jesse, our chief kept, Weber's running.
Harry Ott, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I'm the, my name's Terry Ott. I'm the owner of Marino's Beauty Shop down the road. I'm sure most people have already heard of me by this point. I've talked to Brandon today for about an hour on the phone, so he's kind of familiar with my stand. Can you hear me okay?
Could you state your address, please?
Oh, sorry, 1009 East Michigan Ave.
You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We discussed this parking issue, and as far as like I explained to him, I have measured the road, we have talked about it. What everybody here wants to see that lives along this road, and all the people that we have talked to that have come into my shop, which Linda Lenu said that there was 450 signatures, which there is. They all want the exact same thing. They want one driving lane each way, which stops the swerving, keeps everybody safer. But they also see the need for the parking lane on each side of the street, which, because people that have houses along here need that parking for their house, for family members and things to visit. Some people have handicapped children, they have to have parking for doctors and nurses to come visit the home. There's ample room for parking, and if there even wants to be a bike lane in between, that's fine. As it was said by him, though, he wouldn't want to be out there riding a bike next to semis and everything either. So, but he also made the statement that if the bicycles were allowed on the sidewalk, that that would solve that whole problem. Now, the problem that he brings up with this buffer lane, so that it seems to keep people away from the pedestrians on the sidewalk, there's already a 16-foot terrace out there, and I have never heard of, yet, of a car deciding to jump that terrace and start running over people on the sidewalk. So a buffer lane to keep that from happening, that's a little silly and ridiculous. A buffer lane to help people decide, once they leave the sidewalk, that they have, already have 16 feet to decide they're going to cross a intersection with a traffic light, and that now that they should maybe look both ways and make sure the light is green for them to walk, six feet more, so be it. But if you put a parking lane down through here, and if they don't want parking down there in that area, that's fine. Make it no parking in that particular area with the cross marks that was already discussed. That would now give them eight feet, not just six feet as a buffer, which seems to make a lot more sense, and makes everybody happy. There's no reason not to do that, except for this bike lane. Last I knew, bicycles didn't really, we can look out there, and there's maybe two that go by a day. So to change everybody's lifestyle up through here, and their homes and their parking for maybe two bicycles a day, it just doesn't seem like it makes any sense. And for the center turn lane, we've never needed a center turn lane here. We don't have traffic backups. We never have. I've lived here all my life, never seen it ever happen. And even if there were, we talked about increased traffic, I, I still don't believe that would ever be a problem, because now the college wants to close a couple of streets anyway.
You exceeded your time, Terry, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anybody else, Jesse?
Elisa Cooper, I believe.
Hi, thank you. It's actually Reynolds, Elisa Reynolds. I live at 514 East Michigan Avenue. I agree with everything that Terry Ott was just saying. I would like to continue on basically with what he was saying, that everyone on Michigan Ave, at least in my block between Huron and Oswego, are in complete agreement with Terry and with what I'm about to say, that we believe that the parking in front of our homes should not be taken away. I not only live, but I work right on Michigan Ave, right in this area that we're discussing. And I can count on one hand the amount of bicycles that I see go by in almost an entire year. There's not enough bicycles that ride up and down Michigan Ave to even consider a bike lane, unless you want to count the little kids that are usually riding with their parents while they walk on a sidewalk. And I don't believe they want their kids riding on the road. So to put a bike lane and do away with our parking is just absolutely absurd. We've contacted our councilwoman about this. We've all complained numerous times. We, I mean, most of us that live in this block have absolutely no parking behind our homes. We have, we, at my house, we have two spaces, one for my car, one for my husband's car. If we have guests, if our elderly parents stop over, there's nowhere for them to park if you take away our parking. The same goes with all of our neighbors here. So, and it would hurt Terry Ott's business as well as anything else that might be happening along this, this area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else, Jesse?
It does not look like we have any others at this time.
Okay. We don't have closed session, correct? So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the June 7th session meetings, the June 12th joint study session meetings, and the Assembly permit for Victory Park. I got a motion. Do I have a support? Go forward. City Councilor.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Stein?
Yes.
Motion to approve the commercial garbage license for waste management.
So moved.
Support. City Administrator, do you have information on this?
I do, but I will have to turn your head to the floor here.
Okay.
So just so the council's aware, this is up for approval tonight.
However, this particular applicant is currently in default to the city. So at this time, while it's before you for approval, the administration is recommending that not be approved.
Questions or comments for Collins, or if you may, you call.
I haven't paid their taxes. So point of information, we vote, and we vote no, we're declining. If you vote yes, you're approving, and city administration has requests that we decline that petition.
They're going to do anything?
Correct. No, it just, just to reiterate that the initial background just shows that they are owed to the city. We have reached out to them on several attempts, and we have received no response, and they have not resolved this, this matter.
Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Clark?
So this has been ongoing matter for quite some time, so would it be not a good idea or, or a good idea for whomever precinct this is to see what's going on and why, you know, they haven't been compliant with this instead of it coming back on, and we disapprove, and then they come back again, back out, what the matter is?
So this is for the commercial garbage licenses, so they probably service multiple commercial locations throughout the city. I don't know that it's located in any one particular precinct, but like, like the manager said, I mean, they've been notified several times to file, pay the taxes, and they just aren't being responsive.
Okay.
Yeah, this, by the way, this is just their, this is just the commercial license, because as the council's aware, we have ranger servicing for residential.
City Secretary of Government?
Councilmember Lenu?
No.
Williamson?
No.
Clark?
No.
Reed?
No.
Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
No.
And Mayor Stein?
No.
Motion to approve the commercial license for public waste.
So moved.
Go forward. City Administrator, or Collins, do you have comments on this?
This one is okay.
Question or comment from council? Yes, Councilwoman Lenu.
Could you speak a little bit more to what our commercial garbage license, who that services, what that services?
Where it could be, any, any commercial establishment that, that uses, I guess what I would refer to as a dumpster-style waste receptacle. It's usually restaurants, anywhere in the industrial park, the large housing complexes, they probably all have commercial refuse removals. So basically, any place that uses refuse removal that is not residential.
Yes.
Just so you guys know, we use it to help get the waste work done for, for removal.
Any other question or comments from council? All right, City Secretary of Government?
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lenu?
Yes.
And Mayor Stein?
Yes.
Motion to approve the mechanical and user device license for the Redbox automated in Leisure Hour Club.
So moved.
Support. Collins?
Unfortunately, Redbox has also been noncompliant with their filing and tax payment requirements, and so we are recommending that this, the administration is recommending that this one be denied for the same reason.
So you have to do one step with, with, I can show us. So you don't leisure hour it in? No, this is located at Leisure Hour, is that correct? Or? This is where it's at, so in a minute, so we got two separate ones? Two separate votes?
They're both, well, they're both noncompliant, so.
Oh.
So just type over the, I think type over the papers together.
Okay, got it. Oh, I see, okay.
That would be bad.
So you need to use separate votes, or is it?
Um, I'm, probably just in the, in the interest of, of being thorough, I will probably do a separate vote on for Redbox in this one, for Leisure Hour.
So for the Leisure Hour, they were looking at the jukebox, is that correct? Jukebox and a food table. Oh, yeah, two things, it says two items.
Ju, yes, the jukebox and, and the pool table.
Pool table, okay. So that's what we're running on, for the Leisure Hour, jukebox and the pool table. And then do we all have the sexes?
And then the?
Okay.
I mean, the Redbox is just obviously a, a DVD kiosk.
Okay, so for the Leisure Hour, plus, any quick coming up?
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Reed?
No.
Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
No.
Lanew?
No.
Williamson?
No.
And Mayor Stander?
No.
But for the Redbox that is located on Eaton Street, city clerk, may I?
Councilmember Reed?
Wait a minute, now this is for Redbox that's located on Eaton Street.
How are they? They're also in default.
No.
Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
No.
Lanew?
No.
Williamson?
No.
Clark?
No.
And Mayor Stander?
No.
Motion to approve the resolution to confirm Freedom of Information Act Coordinator and Deputy Coordinators. City manager, say it.
Motion?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, now. Motion? So moved.
Support.
All right.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So in part, in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, we are required to have a FOIA coordinator. Currently, our city clerk serves as our FOIA coordinator. We are looking to designate that role to our records clerk, our public safety records clerk, to oversee the FOIA requests for our public safety. And then our deputy clerk, Pamela Beck, will oversee all of the FOIA requests received for signal from the other departments. So we're just looking to designate them and use those.
So city clerk, may I? Was the coordinator?
Yes.
And now we're looking to have them split between two different votes, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Yes, city, I'm sorry.
So you said one newly will go to the H L person? Our records clerk, our public safety records clerk, Prisha Kendra, she will handle all of the FOIA requests received for public safety. So she will process those and then our deputy clerk, Pamela Beck, will oversee and handle all of the other FOIA requests that were received at the city level. Yes.
Any other questions, how much of council? City clerk, may I?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Stander?
Yes.
Motion to approve the adult use marijuana processor and grower permits for 1009 industrial?
So moved.
Okay. You have support? I will support. So you have the documents in front of you. Questions, you have Collins?
So a couple things, just one is a reminder, the three applications you have for this agenda item and the next two need to be turned back into the court after we're done with the vote. Agenda items E, F, and G, they're all the same entity. They're having their, they're obtaining, applying for licenses at, at three different believe they're all contiguous with each other. I'm getting it not from our planning director. So they're all contiguous, but the one that's before you is just one Class C license with a processing license. The next one is just one, one Class C grower. The third one is one Class C grow and a processor. All the, these, all the applications have cleared all the department reviews. They've cleared my office review. And so administration is recommending approval.
E, do you have additional comments?
Not really in particular, Collins summed up there, well, the three parks are owned by the same party. They formal L between industrial and Elliott and industrial park. They've been used for various things over the years. This is, we're probably going to get some kind of new tenant in there. And over doing the application, I saw some interest with the boxes that I'm checking off. It was our first ones with the new application that we just made, but they crossed their keys and done their I C.
And they were all approved by planning commission last week. Questions or comments from council? City clerk, may I?
Councilmember Lawler?
No.
Lanew?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
No.
Reed?
No.
Jackson?
No.
And Mayor Stander?
Yes.
So the number, so was that just the full book on E through G then, Collins?
I'm sorry?
Was that just the full book on E through?
No, no, it was just on E.
Okay, so. Motion to approve the adult use marijuana grow permit for 1007 industrial.
So moved.
Support. Questions, Hammetts? Councilmember Williamson?
As a reminder, each of the applications require a $5,000 fee along with, if you look inside here, proof of their assets, proof of their business, proof that they're following the law, laws that we have passed in our city and in our state. It would be a disservice to cherry pick this business over the other business to say no. And so if councilmembers are going to vote no on law abiding, tax paying business entities in the city from doing their business, they should probably speak up to their objection.
And I will add that, you know, like we said, this wasn't required by the planning commission. We have policies, city policy in place that they followed. And so I guess that this is going to be how men probably change policy and resolution. And Collins, I guess I would just ask, are we? Yeah, I was gonna say, are we?
I wouldn't want to plant an idea in anyone's head, but if, if we've got ordinance on the books and an applicant has complied with it and we don't grant a license or in this case without some sort of justification, I would expect a lawsuit.
Any questions, man?
Oh, also, point of information, and because of the last application that was voted down, someone who was in the no voting party will have to bring it up to make it right if we plan on making it right. So we're already heading into very troubled territory right now. I just would like everyone to know that our lawyer just mentioned legal exposure and legal action for turning down lawful entities right now within our system.
Yes, Collins?
I guess what I would say is a couple, a couple things come to mind here. I, I, if, if council doesn't want to issue adult use grow or processing licenses within the city, that's absolutely fine. We can, we can mix our ordinance and opt out. But, you know, we have an ordinance on the books and, and this particular facility applied and complied with it and it passed all reviews, so you know, like I said, if we're not going to approve those entities that comply, I, my recommendation would be that the council mix that ordinance and not have it at all. I think the other thing, if, if that previous motion isn't reconsidered, my recommendation would be at a minimum, we're probably going to have to refund their application fee. But I, I'm just telling you, I mean, I don't, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm a litigation attorney. I like the corporate. So, I mean, I have no problem fighting this battle on the city's behalf, but I would expect I've given the sum of money involved here that there will be litigation.
Well, then how will we opt out?
We would basically just have to rescind our ordinance and, and opt out. Just basically opt out of adult use marijuana again.
Council, I, I make a motion to rescind our former resolution and opt out of adult use marijuana, marijuana.
So we need to, we need to deal with our motion that's on the floor first for the permit. City clerk, may I?
Councilmember Lanew?
What are we voting on? The motion that currently?
The motion to approve the adult use marijuana grow permit for 1007 industrial. Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark? Reed?
No.
Jackson?
No.
Lawler?
No.
And Mayor Stander?
Yes.
So we had a motion by councilwoman Clark. You want to rephrase, I guess?
So I make a motion that we should look at our resolution and change it from adult use marijuana and opt out of it.
So, okay, as a, as a, I guess it's a point of information to the council to add an agenda item, which just would be at a meeting, there must be a super majority of council to add that. So 500 would have to vote to add that. Which certainly can, just per charter we have to add if we're going to add a new agenda because it's after 12:00 AM on the day of the meeting.
So are you asking for that to be on this agenda or maybe like for the next, to the next agenda?
Oh, then, then it's, yeah, then it's.
Yep, Collins?
So just knowing where, where these are all going here, I we're probably gonna, I, I just we're gonna have to probably refund these application fees just FYI. And I don't know if that's going to save us from litigation, but I'm just, it is, I mean, again, I, I don't have a dog in this fight. I will defend the city no matter what it decides to do, but I just want to make council very aware of that.
Point of information, Collins, can you share, when did we pass the adult use marijuana grower process ordinance? Because I, we spent a lot of time on that, multiple pages of policy.
What difference does it make?
I didn't understand what you said.
I mean, what difference would that make just now, when?
I just want to hold on, like ordinance was in place and how many others of these have been approved before tonight?
We haven't approved any other adult use. This, this would be the first adult use facilities.
But what did we, what was this?
We
Passed as an ordinance?
We opted out in 2019, but I feel like we opted back in, I just may find it here inside. I think it was at the beginning of 20. We adopted it in 2020-5. Sorry, I'm just loading it right now. We don't have these in me yet, oh yeah. Looks like we adopted this September, I'm sorry, it was adopted June 15th of 20, it went into effect September 6th of 20.
Yes, in 2020?
2020, yes.
Okay. A motion to approve the adult use marijuana processor and grower permits for 929 Elliott.
So moved.
Support. You guys, Collins and Williamson?
When we walk out of this room tonight as council people, we will have to talk to our constituents about why we are voting down licenses that are going to bring jobs to our community. You need to speak up and say why you are objecting to this. People, the people have a right to know why you are objecting to lawful business in this community that brings jobs. Because when I walk out of here, I know the phone call is going to happen. And I'm going to have to say, well, my fellow council members just voted no and stayed silent. So put it out there, tell us why you're voting no and own it. Don't hide behind your no vote and stay quiet.
When they call you, you answer them when they call you.
Point of information, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, yes, council, may I?
So I'll speak up. So we've, from the recreational marijuana, people have had conversations that they want to support it or not. Adult use marijuana is the same language. It's just somebody growing it instead of selling it. But it's still the same language. It's not for medical reasons. It's for recreation.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Just like to point out that this is perfectly legal per the city ordinance, per the state of Michigan law. This business has paid the fee. They require a very high fee to even file that application. They're, they are basically guaranteed to make investment into our community to keep our industrial park full and provide jobs for our citizens. Now with a, with a community that is more than half below poverty level with, and we complain about how trashy our community looks sometimes and how gross things look. Now we can't afford to fix things. What businesses that this council will continue to turn down lawful business who wants to hire people in this community? Please answer that question.
Yes, council, you can go all over this community and see signs warning for hiring. I mean, all over Allen, all over Val Creek, all over Jackson, all over everywhere, there's people trying to hire people. The marijuana is keeping them from getting the job because there are some people who are saying they're not going to hire people who can't pass marijuana tests. You know, and so therefore they're not going to get a job unless they're working for marijuana places. I don't support it. I didn't support it on a planning commission. And I said, because when the guy came in and he was with the marijuana, medical marijuana, I supported that. But when it came in, when he said, well, we need to have recreational marijuana supported so that we can start having the use of it and everything. I said, but you got a medical marijuana business. I supported your medical marijuana business because I supported people who needed it because of illnesses and things like that. I don't have to support this. And will not. So, you know, you know how you want to, I will, I want to.
Councilor Clark, do you have your hand up here?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say from the, the last meeting we had, and that was a discussion that was here. And that kind of gave me a different perspective when we spoke in the study session.
What was it?
Whatever it was. Anyway, when the reporter spoke up and said that the guidelines were not changed, although the, the laws have changed and basically comedians here raising to do it. So here we are in a situation that yeah, the, it's not federal law, this is state. So until something is done better, I don't like how Michigan just threw us in it. Didn't make any plans or anything else. And it's just, it's a mess to me. It's not, it's not being done productively. And if we can't think of other ways to get employment in this town other than bringing facilities to grow marijuana, then shame on us.
I was at a L O L meeting and, and back before COVID. And they were saying then it was just a mess because they hadn't did any real good planning before they did this.
City clerk, may I? What I'm sorry.
Um, I'm, I'm not able to move with them because it, it hasn't changed and I don't believe it's even wanting to change. Fire is being able to get a job with this. And we are talking about how our society is. We do not help. We do not need to help them. Hell, it'd be worse than what it is with this marijuana. Because I continue to see as we go into different things here, it leads to something else. We did the ordinance and we agreed to those ordinance before for the medical marijuana. So then I guess we need to make sure we pick at everything and make sure what we sign is only for what we have agreed upon. And still the same thing, trying to find a job and if they started to hire, if they start to hire 18 and up, we got a problem with marijuana. So I know you guys might not see that, but I just, when I say I want our our youth and our teens to be able to be developed and have good character, do things, I believe our seed can come together and find better things to bring to this city to make us more profitable. And this does.
And I agree, but I just think.
But I mean, you know, Shane asked us to come behind because, you know, I'm the one that does sit here and might not say anything. Okay, but I'm standing and just allowing him to know and anyone else that asks me. I've had people call, call me from other time shifts to say, are you having this problem? What can we do? We don't agree that it was passed. What are you guys are going to do? What are you guys going to want to say? People are literally calling me, asking me this question. So I am standing for no marijuana here.
I understand. I just, we just need to be very cautious because like I said, we do have this as an.
If five thousand dollars is not even because they gave it to us, give it back to them. Very nice.
But this probably bigger. It might be bigger, but we can do better. Councilwoman Williamson?
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear people speaking their position tonight. When their names are listed in the legal action that's taken along with mine because I will, because I'm one of seven with you. This is completely embarrassing. There has been no incoming. There's been no discussion. This is a, this, this is really shameful that it seems that four people have decided before council how they were going to vote on this together and then showed up at a meeting and voted no.
Yeah, I think what you said, that's. Quite a lot of radio.
Right, so where? Right, so where, that's.
Stop while that one, imagine.
We know, we're waiting for it, quite a order, let's, we're waiting, councilman, uh, city manager. That was her.
Yeah, um, I will answer that, I have not talked to anybody. I am not um one of the people that can be persuaded or discouraged, I make my own decisions, Shane. And you know that personally, thank you.
City clerk, the mayor, let's, let's move forward.
Council member Williams, yes?
Yes.
Clark, no. Reed, no. Jackson?
No.
Waller?
No.
Lanu?
Yeah.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes. Motion to approve assessing services of contract renewal for B and B assessment. Frank Stricker, we will. Council, that's one.
Uh, good evening, council, county, county instructor. Um, what we're bringing before you now is the uh assessor. Remember, we contracted out with an assessing firm to do the assessing for the city, and historically, it's been very challenging to get assessor here, but um with any longevity, so we, we, years ago, we tried to get in-house and quite frankly, just got to the point where, you know, because of the costs involved and, and having to make cuts, uh we decided to try to contract an outsourced, so we did a full-time assessor and an assessing staff, and we outsourced it. And it, it's become challenging, um, when we first did it, we worked with the county, the county had decided to hire an assessor, we had in a subcontract that held to other communities, or local communities. But that program's long gone, and the last few times we tried to find an assessor, we got very difficult time. I've got all the state send letters out, asking for RFPs for, um, you know, give a list from the state of all the called by assessors, and you send letters out, quite honestly, it's just, there's kind of a shortage of assessors in the state. And I think we fall into that category where we're large enough that we have to have kind of a higher level assessor, but we're small enough that we're not real appealing to, you know, assessing firms that want to grab big markets, I guess, you know. And we're kind of in the middle of the state here, so it's not likely we got other, the, the last, the only interest we have besides this firm last time was a assessor that contracted with Mason, and they gave us an offer, or a proposal, and on the surface, it looked, on a per parcel basis, it looked appealing. But the state requires or recommends, strongly recommends that you have twenty percent of your properties actually examined each year. And we do twenty percent this year, twenty percent next year, so on a five-year period, hopefully you're, you know, getting out to see all the properties. But they would charge a fee for doing the extra, or extra fee for the twenty percent, when you added that in, it put way up over, you know, sixty thousand a year. Now, with the current assessor that we have, I feel we've been very fortunate to get them, we were looking at the same time Marshall was looking, because they were also using the assessor that the county used, and like I said, the county did away with that program. And Marshall was able to get this individual to come in, and he's extremely knowledgeable, um, he does Oceana the county over there, but he also does some other uh places over there, and he is very involved with uh tribunals, and his wife actually does a lot of assessing education, teaching other assessors, so we have a very, you know, big database of knowledge between the two of them. Um, so I think we're very fortunate to get him. This particular contract is the same as the one we have, the only difference is increasing the price, three hundred dollars a month, which equates, well, what it will be four thousand a month, up from thirty-seven hundred. So we're looking at forty-eight thousand a year, which is still way less than what it would cost if we had in-house or from other proposals we've had or passed. Uh, so my recommendation obviously is that we build with them, we've had very good luck with them, so.
If I can, just the budget amendment, that we'll need to.
Uh, yep, um, I didn't know we ought to get all together or something, so I've also brought, because of the increase, I've also brought council by the proposed budget amendment, um, he, the contract is going from July to June. Of course, our fiscal year goes January to December, so we're kind of six months into it under the whole rate, so we really only got to increase um the, the budget for the last um six months. So I just bumped it up two thousand, I kind of rounded it up a little higher, um, really only needs to be eighteen hundred, but I bumped it up, rounded it to two thousand. If you do the math, I might have to come out of the fund balance, but if you do the math, two thousand dollars on a one point five million dollar fund balance, it's like point one percent would be the impact, so it's hardly even gonna be noticeable on the fund balance. I'm sure there'll be other amendments and changes, both positive and negative, between now and the end of the year, where this will more or less be, we want it to be noticeable. Any questions? Oh, and I did, um, I think I did have Bernie Curtis look at it, but I see he has a question, so maybe.
I was just gonna say, I did look at it, and, and it is, it's effectively the exact same contract that the previous council approved uh several years ago, the only thing is that they're not hiring the dates, and as the finance terms became some of the, the fee schedule, but other than that, it has all the requisite requirements.
Mayor, from Jackson, yes, but can you show, just tell me the date that you want to change?
I didn't, I, oh, I didn't change it, I just, they, they updated the dates, um, as far as the effective date on the front page being July one, twenty twenty-one. And then, um, when you look at the back, uh, um, paragraph nineteen, the, the years are updated to reflect year one through three being July twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-four. Um, and I believe it is also in paragraph twenty-four, they've updated that the, the term of the contracts to July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-four. So they just, they've updated those to accommodate essentially the same contract, but for a new term, new three-year term.
The only thing that we missed out on was the nineteen, um, the year going through that whole part, that, that struck me.
I'm sorry, the bowl, the bowl?
Yeah, the bowl part on page five, on nineteen, the years one through, year one through three to like twenty twenty-one to the twenty twenty-four, the four thousand dollars per month.
Right.
Yeah.
And like I said, that's up slightly from the prior agreement, which was thirty-seven hundred a month, but it's.
I heard you say you just added, you rounded some stuff off, so.
Yep, so it's an additional three hundred a month, but since we're already halfway through the year, this won't take effective course until July. So there'll only be six months remaining at the higher, at the three hundred.
Okay, so I need to be sure, okay, all right, thank you. And then, um, I need, um, overall, so we got the current budget amount. And then the proposed new budget amount that number might down instead of up.
Right, because we would be taking this additional two to the point when council approved the twenty twenty-one budget back in November, or December. This two, extra two thousand was not built into it, we kind of, as the assessor and I kind of agree, this timeframe snuck up on us, we kind of all forgot the dates of the renewal already, so.
This is the general one, so that it all decreases, but this is the budget for the assessing, so it will.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I missed someone, yes.
Tom, do we still, do we say that we rest on, what is this?
Yeah, that's a different, um, item, state, though, of course, does all the inspections and stuff, these, this contract is just for the assessing for the properties.
Any other questions or comments for Tom or city managers today? City clerk, do we have? What do you think about motion? Oh, what's your? All right, good, sorry.
Motion.
Motion is just, yeah, motion. So far. All right, city clerk, do we have?
All right, council member Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion to approve, um, the July Cooper Street for Fourth of July fireworks.
It's almost. It's a four.
Councilwoman Reed, yeah, I, I was just asking, who do you? No, that's been.
Is this supported?
Very well supported, yeah, yeah.
Who's doing these fireworks? Yeah, because I think the other ones are out on the other side of the river.
Yep, if I, um, this is, we received a request from Justin Harper, he's looking to um set up fireworks within this area on July fourth. Fireworks, you were talking about ha- um, this bullock around July third, that's, will take place out of um the cemetery, the usual event, so he is just requesting that um we block off that area on Cooper Street, so we don't have cars driving through while he sets fire, works out for the kids of the neighborhood, so we just like to bring it before council for.
That's sort of like, just like closing it off, so he can do his own, yeah. Yeah, I, I knew, but I was just wondering who was doing it.
Yeah, Justin Harper, um, he owns the harbor shop down, near downtown.
Yes, council.
So, if we're gonna have any, um, anything, a certain, the water, anything like else, like that, to make sure there's no fires?
Like safeguards. Is that what you're asking, safeguards?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I would ask you so, but we will confirm when we have him to make sure that that is in place, yeah. But we just wanted, because we haven't done this, so we're just waiting for council to get your direction on if we would allow this right now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? City clerk, do we have?
Council member Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Lanu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes, so, um, we, we have this and has a caveat that he has precautions just in place, and possibly with the chief. Okay. So you have a discussion for street hot patch. Director, no, let everybody take this one over.
All right, so this one's gonna be pretty short and sweet. Uh, since the asphalt plant liquidated in March, uh, the street department has thrown, I wrote this a week ago, so it's actually a hundred and thirty-five pounds of hot patch. Um, as far as route, excuse me, as far as the route goes, they really don't have a route that they do week to week. Um, they kind of go on where we dig, so if we had a water sewer issue, they'll fill those. Um, and then they go on complaints, so every week we get lots of complaints. Um, some of them are for holes, so we issue those every week, and then they go based on complaints. And then lastly, we just, you know, we have twenty-five employees in the DPW, we drive around town a lot, we know the bad areas, we hear people talking, get it. So, we fill those areas as well, so it's really pretty simple, um, yeah, that's really all I can say.
Councilwoman Reed, what do you think about the holes in front of my house?
I think.
I watch you every morning when you come around that corner, and you go way to the other side, because there's holes there that deep.
And they're bad?
And, yeah, and that's what I've been asking, and, and, and they patched twice this year. And, and two, three days' time, the stuff has popped out, that's why I was asking, where was the hot, uh, hat, hot patching? So it could seal those things, so that that stuff keeps putting, jumping out, and, and there, I got that hole again. God today, I, to every morning, when you come around there, I see you, and, and you missed the hole. He came around, and he knew to go around the holes too, and ran up for that driveway to that house across the street. There's a driveway, and there's a tree, and there's a big stone there. Side of his hot patch, well, I know it did, because I heard it, as he's trying to get back on the street. And I've been complaining about those holes, since about six of them, that hole bit clean down the middle, it's nothing but holes, it's deep.
Yeah, what you're really needs is reconstruction.
Yeah, yeah, send it right going out, because we've been waiting for it.
That's part of the transportation asset management plan, so the road condition goes, and there's periods of radiance on all the roads in town. And Chesna is very low on the phaser scale, uh, so.
On the what scale?
The phaser rating, that's part of the transportation asset management plan that we've talked about with Lanu.
There was a number, was it at eight, uh, eight or three, there was somewhere I saw it, was it was either eight or three?
I have them, I have them, I'll, as we can look at them.
Well, somebody don't hurt themselves trying to miss those holes, because that guy today, he gonna have to get some optics in there.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, councilwoman.
For a situation like this, what, what are the alternatives if the hot patch isn't working, and we can't just reconstruct the street?
So really, in, in that particular area, what really needs to happen is we can come through and chip out all the bad stuff and kind of like an overlay. Um, the equipment we have is not the greatest for overlays, um, we can do it, our roller is quite small. Um, and our hoppers are three ton hours, so they're not large either. Um, so it's difficult for us to do a large overlay, that's why, when you see like a, a cutout for a water main, it's small sections, because that's what we can do best. When we start getting to larger areas, it becomes wavy, I don't know if you guys remember on Clark Street a few years back, we did a large overlay there, it was really wavy, and that's because we don't have the proper equipment.
Is, is that the one that, that the council purchased about three years ago, the?
Yeah, those are the hoppers, yep, and the hoppers are great, they're just, you know, they're not huge, so we can't do a large area.
How often do you all set up how you need to purchase, years you need to purchase things to work in the city? Okay, for instance, uh, the hot patch. You, you say, okay, we'll buy this this year, it'll last for three years, and we need to start preparing, so when that three years is up, we're ready to get one for the next three, is that what you do?
Uh, quite honestly, we don't really have a good depreciation schedule, so again, it's for the last seven years that I've been here, it's whatever rates, we try to buy them. Uh, something that I would like to do is have an depreciation schedule to know like expectancy of the item, and pay for that over time.
Maybe that's something we should work on.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments on this topic? Yes, councilwoman.
What would it take to implement an appreciation schedule?
Shouldn't take much, actually, I'm sure that Tom and I could come up with it together, it would matter a few weeks.
Anything else? Discussion on our tree service and the equipment, this is for the.
Yeah. All right, so last time we talked about trees, I gave you guys a lot of information, how many trees we've taken down, what that's cost us, trees we got left. And over the last couple of weeks, we have, I think because I've talked on, I spoke on this before, we have doubled the amount of complaints. So we got trees like crazy, um. Yeah, it's, it's, it's nuts. So, um, I kind of asked you guys for some direction, you said, let's look at a bucket truck, so I got a couple of options, I've talked to all tech, they're, the manufacturers of bucket trucks that deal with state pricing. Um, two options, one's kind of like a pickup style, uh, the price he gave me is a hundred and thirty thousand, uh, that has a reach of forty-two feet height. It's a Ford F five fifty frame, so it would look like just a large pickup truck. The next option is a larger dump truck style with a chipper box, uh, and that is a fifty-six foot fr- or reach. I would recommend that we go with a larger truck that has the dumper, the chipper dump. Uh, that will help us not take so much equipment to the job site. Right now, we don't really have a chipper box at all, um, the one we have is, I think it's on a ninety-two Scottsdale, and it's just terrible. The one we have is, I think it's on a ninety-two Scottsdale, and it's just terrible. It's falling hard, the guys repair it every time they move it. So that will save on equipment, save on people going out on the streets. And with the further reach, we can reach out to parks, we can reach out to cemetery, trim our own trees more. Like I mentioned before, if we have a home bucket truck, we can eliminate hiring a lot of the tree work that we do. We contract everything out, so any little trimming, any sign, any, and just anything. We have to contract it out, so we don't have a ton of work out of. I really think that we could cut our tree contract in half, just with the amount of work that we can do the bucket truck ourselves.
Does that truck also be grinding?
The truck does not be grinding, um, that would be a separate unit, a stump grinder, which I'd be more happy to look at, at one time the city did have one, many years before myself, but. And training, uh, I looked at training, um, A I S equipment is who we normally have train us on larger equipment. They can provide a class for eight people for a thousand dollars, two day class, and that will certify everybody on the operations of a bucket truck. We do take a chainsaw, uh, chainsaw training class every year. I would just send in the same guys through that just as a refresher, because we're gonna use chainsaws a lot more. And that was free last year, the guy is pretty good about putting it on for free, it's kind of helpful for everybody to save their life. So he probably would do that again. And that is something that my old show, when they came out, they hit us really hard for training. So we have worked hard in the DPW to reevaluate how we do training and get back on board with the program.
Yes, Councilwoman, um, Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just have a question, so, um, when the trees are grinded down, the, the, um, the front of it? You grind it down, what, what are, how are we removing that right now?
So the way that works is, um, we contract that stump grinder now. The way it works, rescue will come out, take a tree out, and then the stump is put out of the list. That stump will eventually get ground down when he is available to grind it. When he grinds it, that puts us on notice, we go down with our loader, we scoop out the sawdust below grain, then we put topsoil and seed.
Oh, mine's a bit less additional cost for when you taste the stuff.
When he grinds the stump, it's an additional cost, absolutely. And it's based on size.
Yes, same, I just like.
Thank you, Mayor. So you can see, these are large figures for some of the equipment that we need to purchase for our DPW. Um, I would like to begin the budget process a lot sooner than we have the past. So we will be working, our department heads, they will, um, be receiving their, the worksheets here, um, in the near future so that we can start planning to possibly, um, build some of these large purchases in the next years with, um, budget. So this is very helpful, Director Miller, and measurements, it's not, it is, it is an inflation expense, but I think it's, it's well overdue that we need to invest in the equipment within that department.
Yeah, and one more point, they do offer a leasing program? I can get figures on that, I just, it'll take them some time to run off.
Do you have questions or comments for our director here?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder, I just, um, I reached out to, uh, Director Miller about the leasing because I think with, um, the demands I, I view and in our city staff that, um, the, the, the requirements to maintain our equipment is, is an, is an added layer of work. And so if the costs are comparable, I think that that would be a worthwhile, um, investment in terms of the maintenance. I just, yeah, don't want to see anything going into disrepair again, it seems like a pattern that we have. So thank you for giving that information and the depreciation schedule.
We have a discussion on vendor fees. Mayor Brooklyn Jackson, you wanted to bring this up?
Yes, I, um, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to bring it up, and I know we're in our counseling, um, while we have a lot of good questions, I thought I would bring it to you and put it as a discussion. I just know that we need to, I guess, need the organs, the city organs, and we haven't need for such thing as our fees. Because I understand that, um, I don't know if they're consistent, because say, for instance, if, when we did have a chamber, when they had things out in town for our, the festival, they had a certain fee that they charged for people that had booths, okay? And there were food vendors, so if you had, um, a small area or a bigger area, there was a different price for each one. Now, I keep hearing the word peddler, 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 food peddlers. Now, I know a food peddler license wouldn't be the same as just someone standard having just a booth sitting there to, um, delivering to sell Uber, just be there just to sell any type of items. So there's a lot of questions being asked, uh, what, what are we doing? And then when they have certain events out in the park, per se, if it's a private event, so we say, those vendors can come out there on those grounds which belongs to us, to see, and they can sell different things. I don't want to even anybody to pay anything, but I just want it to be, um, consistent with them and it be right for everybody, because that's not what I'm hearing. Uh, because if people are leaving us or don't want to come to some events that we're having, you know, Juneteenth, things are overheard and the wind that some didn't want to come here, decided they want to, they get charged from down, this person get charged that, and they want to be a part of what is happening. So I just think that we need to get that consistent, because I mean, using, utilizing all these different options that we have around, that we can move all this around through the city, and it'd be, we have some wonderful weekends here to draw people. But that's not consistent, really, I don't understand. And if we have something, then we all need to know about it, so we can share it.
Councilwoman Lawler?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, um, in talking about vendor fees, um, and people losing our parks or whatever, um, around the city to have special events, um, it was one thing that came to mind, and I'm just trying to put it on the table. You can use it or you don't have to, but when people come to us and fill out these applications to use our park or wherever, um, I, I, if we could, um, and I don't know if that's, is something in there, um, of what I'm hearing you say, but, um, is it something in there where we can say, okay, if you have in this, um, musical out in the green park, please make sure we know if you're gonna have vendors, um, in that package. And then when they do return their package, you say, okay, I'm ready to say, to submit my application, maybe we can give them some type of, um, wildcat paw paw or a city logo to say that we all know, and plus our public say, we know that these vendors or, um, food trucks, um, are okay, and they have been registered, and they have came to be, so that, you know, all of us are, are in the same place there all the time. But if our officers are out there and they may see someone without this sign, they can kind of distinguish, oh, they been to see our city manager, or maybe they have been to see our city manager. So if we can, kind of like when they do, um, sign in the application, we can give them something to say, hey, you better have this with you while you out there, because if you don't, you are subject to be made pack open leave. So, um, it was just an idea that I, I thought about. I am certainly on board with, um, um, my company city manager about food trucks, she said she was getting on it, so, um, I'm ready to do her thing and, um, she can present it to us whenever she get ready.
But I was gonna say, I was gonna kind of piggyback with what, uh, Mayor Brooklyn Jackson was saying. We were both at an event, and then we were hearing of some upcoming other events that we hadn't heard about. So I think the issue is gonna be is policing these activities. And, and I don't want to say policing it in a bad way, but just keeping track. Because like, if there is an event being held somewhere that we have no idea about, because they haven't gone through the proper channels of applying for a permit or whatever, then whoever's organizing that event is then not conveying information to people who they may be working with as reverence to a vendor or somebody just setting up a table, selling the stuff. So we have no idea that these type of pop-up vendors are coming to town or even here, because we don't know about it. Um, so I think there's a, an added layer of issues that we might have to deal with on top of, you know, saying, if you're gonna be a vendor, you have to show proof that you've gone through the proper channels, type of thing. So, yes, Councilwoman Reed?
When we planned Juneteenth, we had a committee of seven, each one had something to do. And our ones that handled vendors, each vendor that sent in their money, they sent in their card about what they were gonna be selling or doing or whatever. So we had a list, and we had their place set aside so that when they came, it was checked off, those were the only ones that would have been there. Same thing will be happening since we had postponed to Saturday. We have that all set out, and even with the health departments, we had eight different units of, of health coming, not of health departments, but of people doing health or passing out information about health. They'll be doing the COVID shots, the, the blood pressure tests and all of that. But each one of those were also, we had on things, so they will be the only ones that will be allowed.
And we have, and we have type of, and, and you have kind of, you, you have things in place.
Yeah.
But like, somebody who's just creating something, you know, at a park without letting anybody else, no, that's, that's the issue that I was trying to bring with that. We, again, not saying policing is a bad thing, but how are we keeping track of who's setting up shop or whatever out here? Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So with this business fee, what came to my mind was, um, the experience of being charged a peddler's fee when I have a food truck. So like I said, me and her already talked about it, but I'm just telling them, we don't know what we talking about, so. Like she said she was gonna be, we don't have anything for a food truck.
It's being worked on.
Yeah. But, um, from my understanding, we can't charge a peddler's license for a food truck. I was told this was two different things. So, um, my thing is, like I said, when they come and ask us, can they use the park or whatever, we need to put that in that packet to say, if you are having vendors, you need to let us know, and these is the rules. And when you come back, let us know how many you bought right off, and they need to have this little logo right here to say, you saw our city manager. So I think, um, what my thing was, was trying to distinguish, um, food truck versus peddler and, um, public property versus private property, so that's what that was to me, so.
Yes, good, Mayor, I think, yes, we're in the process of establishing an official food truck ordinance, so that will have an official permit, um, fee, an application that anyone who has a food truck will have to complete. Um, I like your suggestion, I think we can update our current applications to include all of the, um, proper licenses or permits that they must have if they are gonna hold an event, so I think we can, we'll update that if we can do. But I would like a tracurcus, um, to confirm, our peddler license, that is the, currently the only thing that we have in place, which all of these vendors would fall under. So if you're selling anything within our community, you should apply for a peddler's license, um, before doing so. And as Mayor said, a, a big problem is we don't know about all of the events or things going on. And unless we, um, they address, approach the city, complete the proper application, pay the fee, we are unaware of that. Our fee schedule is approved by council every year with our budget. We cannot charge any fee that is not included in that fee schedule. So it's posted on our website, um, we have a copy here in the finance, you can request a copy from my office, Burke's office, um, it's out there. So we should not be charging anything that is not included on that fee schedule. If we are, that's a big issue, and I need to be neighbor of that immediately.
Any other questions or comments? Turned on the items, what do we want?
We have two more.
Just an addition of the sale of the mower and then the purpose, but if you're prepared to pick. So, um, added items, purchase of John Deere large area mower. Director Boyne?
Sale of John Deere large.
Sale.
Sorry. So in twenty eighteen, the city, we purchased a large area mower, uh, for fifty-five thousand dollars. We've used this mower for two and a half seasons, it only has turn seventy-five hours on it. A normal zero turn, we, we would put seven, seven hundred and fifty hours per season on that. So you may say, well, the large area mower mows a lot more than a regular reserve turn. True, let's say it doubles because it's eleven foot deck, but still only five hundred and fifty hours. We can't utilize this mower as we need to. It's great for large areas that are really open, you know, it really, it does a good job, it mows well, you can fly with it. But we have too many trees, too many obstacles, rocks, fences, et cetera. It's just, the mower isn't what we thought it would be. So we've kind of been talking, we need more zero turns, we don't have three in the, the DPW side, and, and we're, we're behind on mower. One idea we came up with is to sell this mower, because we can't u, utilize it properly. So I procured a deal with Jackson County, they combined for forty thousand dollars, and then we use that money to purchase three new zero turns and two trailers. So any, as, as you see in here, uh, there's three quote, or there's, yeah, three quotes for the zero turns. Two, um, larger ones, six footers, and then one five footer for the cemetery. Uh, one, the larger one will stay at the street, and the other one go to the parks. So then we'll have six in the DPW, and we can keep up on going. The reason I've included trailers on this, we have four trailers we use now, two are in terrible condition. I don't know if you guys seen them driving around, they're, I, I want to pull them from the road, quite honestly, but we don't have anything or anything with. So this is all state pricing, it's through my deal, and literally we will not have to pay any money to have this happen, we'll have some leftover.
So we're gonna sell for forty thousand, purchase three, run thirty-two, five, five, zero.
Yep.
And a trailer. So do we need, um, action on this from council? Yes, the way we have a motion.
Jackson County has already approved to buy it, so we're all set on that end, everything's good, we've sent it through the city, no bids came through, so we've covered all our bases there. We just need council approval to sell more, and then council approval to purchase three new mowers plus two trailers.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So do.
Support?
Support.
Any further discussion or questions? City clerk coming up?
Councilmember Clark?
Yeah.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yeah.
Lawler?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mary Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have another items or, okay? Public comments? Oh, I'm sorry, yep, I already sent that off, I know, I didn't have it myself. Feature items? What we would like to see other next? I got councilmember Clark's from other than. About these? Do you have a motion?
It would be an ordinance, it would be, if it were an ordinance to, it would, it would have to rescind, I think it's, I want to say it's ordinance is twenty-two dash two-two-zero through two thirty-two, and simultaneously opt out of the MRTMA.
Any other items?
We will have, um, Amy DeFrey coming, I'm gonna have to have myself, not next meeting, but second meeting in July to provide a quarterly update on what's happened at the U C.
Any other feature agenda items?
I had a couple, I wrote down, I love my homework.
Yeah, I didn't understand, here are your items for, uh, not this one, it's the next one, for, for Mayor DeFrey.
Yes, I am, I want to have someone named, this is called Vision, I want to be able to come to present to him.
Who are those names? W H L?
Yeah, W H L, who, and then V I S. Yeah.
And whether it's other items. All right. Jesse, do we have any, anybody else with public comments?
Not seeing any handgeries at this time.
Do we need to finish? So we are excusing the council and law. All right, the mayor's report.
I think you made a copy of my report. It was included in the packet. So the first, second, third, and fourth project, the first part I seen was held on Wednesday, June 9. The project is underway and actually just started. We have a schedule, one of us, both with Director Miller and the engineer. Meeting minutes are attached for your reference. The Downtown Development Authority, or our DDA, they have their regular meeting on Wednesday, June 9. They discuss the creation of a social district, the Alvin First Service Agreement, and the Partners Market. On the next regular DDA meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 14, and those are at 7:30 a.m. The Alvin Building Authority, or the ADA, they have their regular meeting on Thursday, June 10. The ADA, they're looking to do a series of improvements to the neighborhood apartments. Those are our senior facility HUD housing that we have here in town. So they are tasked with working with women associates to create a capital improvements plan for those projects, for that building. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 9. Alvin's Farmers Markets, the Wednesday markets, they continue to be a success. Last week, the visitor count was highest it has been this season, 115 visitors. They have a number of programs that they are looking to implement for the 2021 season. They have some of those include featured vendors, Alvin Area Business Booth, monthly raffle baskets, the market calendar, Alvin Promise, and vendor subsidy, and then vendor referral program, and the SNAP and double up program. If you have any questions or for more information, please visit their Alvin Farmers Market Facebook page, or you can reach out to Emily Berbecky. She is the vice chair of our DDA. She's overseeing the Partners Market. Just to remind everyone, our Parks and Recreation Community Survey is live, so we are looking for feedback from our residents on our five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So that survey is open through the end of this month. We've provided to you with a few hard copies to hand out to those of you who would be interested in that. So please encourage everyone to take the time to complete that room survey. Just a reminder, as it's approaching, the Community Y Light Mall cleanup is scheduled for Saturday, June 26, from 9:03, at Ketchum and Hare Fields. It's hard to believe that it's already this time, and so a reminder, City Hall will be closed on Monday, July 5, in observance of the July 4 holiday. With the recent announcement of the orders being lifted, we will remain as is for a few more weeks. We are looking at some changes with our cleaning services, so we are looking to bring on a part-time custodian, and they will be looking, they're starting right after the July 4 holiday. They have to deliver those to another job. So until we're able to have an actual cleaning person on staff, we will not open flowers to the public to give our staff time to do the thorough clean that we have been doing in the absence of an official cleaning person. So once they are on board, we will return back to regular hours. With that being said, though, public meetings will return to normal, so our next meeting public will be allowed to attend with all of the gathering restrictions lifted. A few other things. Kevin O'Brien, we are, has been hired as the superintendent of public work, of public services. We are looking to bring him on board next Monday, June 28. He joins us from La Sula, Montana, after 29 years of working in the DCA up there. He retired, and he is likely to relocate closer to his family here in the service. We're very excited to bring him out. I know Director Miller is extremely excited to have that additional support. And he will oversee our parks, streets, cemetery, that's it. And I believe that is, oh, you should have received an email from my executive assistant, Jesse Winfield, with all of the contact info for DPW, and if there's any issues after hours. So that information has been shared with council, as well as posted on the city's website. And that is all I have.
Any questions for City Mayor, this mayor about her information? Yes.
Is there anybody, anybody on one thing?
Go ahead.
Sorry. So the street upgrade project for second third volume, well, they're tying in some of the new water main. Most is to put out to residents, but there will be shut offs to start, and then their boil water advisory. So everyone's been noticed. I just want you guys aware that that is going on.
Councilmember Collins. Yes, Councilwoman Collins.
There's some really exciting things happening in Alvin, and I just wanted to use this platform to share. You all received an email from the Community Foundation of the Bone Theater last week. Alvin is being selected to be an international music festival city by Arts Midwest, and that's a national arts organization. What that means is free to our community over the next three years will be six international music and singing groups or acts being brought to this community. I'm not allowed to say from here yet. We're gonna be talking about that on Friday. So Friday morning at 11:00 a.m., if you tune into the link that was sent to you, please share that in far and wide, and keep forwarding it as much as we can. We want as many community members on this call as possible to see the announcement of what is coming. But basically, starting in 2022, we will get two acts, one in the fall and one in the spring. And they'll come for an entire week, and they'll go to local schools, or to college. They'll be, they'll probably even come to the city council meeting. And this is all supported through a grant from Arts Midwest, and is, the bone is generously going to house and cater meals for these acts that will come from all over the world. It's very, very exciting. This is a, you know, Alvin celebrates the festival, of course, with all our international flags every year. We talk about the international flavor that our community has, and also the music that we've built in our community over the last several years with Block the Beat, who's at Bone, Bone Country, we're up at the Bone. It's very, very exciting. So please show your support if you're able to join that call at 11:00 a.m. to just see what's happening. There will be some Q and A available at the end. But we're very, very excited about that. And then be on the lookout for some more information, as the Alvin Health Hair Alliance and Alvin Community Foundation have recently partnered to begin providing immersive education experiences around COVID-19 vaccine to continue to get people vaccinated and get our numbers up in county, specifically Alvin related. So there'll be more information coming about that. Again, exciting news for our community. Just very, very excited that Alvin is gonna be recognized in the Midwest for what we do well, with music and entertainment and community. So keep that up.
Yes, Councilwoman Marie.
The Alvin 2021 Parks and Recreation Community Survey is online, and also we have it here. They're due in by June 30, so please either go online. I think City Hall has some down here. Or if not, if they have a call, and I'll get you one together and get those back in, so we can have them for, we'll find out.
The council, the link can be found on the city's webpage. Yes, you have a question?
Yes, just as I spoke earlier about the American, this American Rescue, that it is just a team to just keep us up to date. To say the things that are going on, because we have community members asking many questions of when, how, and all of this.
Absolutely. We are anxiously impatient. Every webinar that we have attended as of lately, they always start off, we're still waiting to hear, they're still trying to figure this out. Official, the official rules should be released by the end of July. We are required to have a plan in place on what to do with those funds. We have three years to utilize the funds that we receive from that. We're waiting for the state to put in place the process for the non entitlement units, which we are, to apply to request our funds. So once we receive that notification, we will then absolutely request our funds from the state, and we will schedule a study discussion town hall meetings to engage with the public on how we properly spend most funds. But I think, or we need to be very strategic on how we utilize those funds, because I think this is, it's not often that we are, we receive such a large amount from, from the government to utilize, and I know we have an abundance of needs throughout our community. So I looking forward to engaging with our residents, as well as council members, to come up with a proper process of how we make the most out of those, maybe the rest of those.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Marie.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I just wanted to share a brief update about the Dream Build Rise Program, which just began within the last couple weeks. There are 15 local entrepreneurs that are diverse by age, ethnicity, business type, experience, and the program is designed to support minority and women-owned businesses in our area. So after the six-week program, which has begun, there will be a pitch competition, which all of us should come out and support consultants and hear what they are doing for our region. We can learn more about this at dreambuildrisealvin.com. And they're also on Facebook, so we can show our support and like them and the work that they're doing. They're currently looking for more fundraising, so that they can continue growing this program and have more cohorts. The Workforce Task Force is also working on connecting residents with resources through a community resource navigator. This is just, you know, recently come up, but if you have any workforce resources or other information, please let me know. Also, council member Lawler and I will be doing our precinct meeting next Monday, June 28, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Caldwell School area. So hopefully, weather permitting, that we'll be able to go through. But we're looking forward to beginning to share information more directly with residents and hear from them as well.
Any other comments? Colin, did you have a comment?
My dear wife is setting for her bars in the next one, so I would appreciate any fingers being crossed, prayers, candles being light, any good vibes you can send her way, not just for her, but for myself.
So I will say that the community is looking forward to having fireworks. This year, July 3, we are one of the few communities in the area that is offering fireworks. So the Chamber of Commerce is organizing this and raising funds for this. They're hoping to be able to provide a spectacular show, but of course, it's all very dependent on the amount of money raised. So if you have any inclination to put funds towards our fireworks, get ahold of the Chamber of Commerce. I should have brought the P O box.
It'll be in E News tomorrow morning.
Okay. So Alvin E News tomorrow morning will have information on how to get funds to the Chamber to help support our July 3 fireworks. So hopefully, if you guys can hear the traffic and weather. And Councilwoman Reed, unfortunately, I won't be able to be to the Juneteenth celebration. I really was looking forward to this past Saturday, and it was hard rocking when I'm sitting there watching the whole ring. I do have a daughter getting married Friday, Bailey, and so they, you take precedence. 12 o'clock, the Juneteenth is about. Juneteenth. All right, do I have what to do here?
Oh.
So I had it.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lanu.
Yeah.
Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. And January 24 P O.